Okay, folks, it's seven o'clock. This is the overall planning board meeting, May 7th, 2019. My name is Kathy Barnard. I'm the chairman of the planning board. Let me introduce the other members. Down at the end of the table to the left, Matt Sullivan, our director of planning and development. Right next to me, to my left, Von Dugan, vice chairman of the planning board. To my right, Mike Cotter, John Thurston, and Peter Goodwin. We have a couple of members that are not here this evening, but we do have a quorum. And so we will proceed. The first item on the agenda is a continuance from our last meeting of April 16th. It's for Skyridge Farm. And there are actually two applications, but we need to deal with the first application, which I will read into the record. And once we complete that one, then we'll determine if we go on with the second application. So, this continued application is Skyridge Farm Condominium Association. This is for a special use permit. And the public hearing was continued from April 16th. This is for TaxMAP 188-63, case 2019-07. The property is located at Two Farmhouse Lane on North Main Street, the old Melanson property. The reason that the application was continued at our last meeting was that planning board members wanted to visit the site. And so we need to properly notice a site visit, which we did. And that took place at six o'clock this evening. Minutes were taken, and it's my understanding that Von Dugan was present, John Thurston, and Peter Goodwin, as well as the applicant. Is that, did I get that correct, folks? Okay. Okay. So, why don't we continue? And I guess probably we want to hear from the planning board members and their observations at the site this evening.
And just a reminder that you have accepted the application as complete, so then the public hearing opened, so you're welcome to comment on it now.
Yes, right.
Yep.
Right. So, somebody want to call, and then Mr. Coons is the applicant's representative, so you'll probably be asked some questions, Dan. Okay. Did any of the planning board members?
So, we visited the site, and we were shown the footprint of the proposed garage in question, not the other garage. That seems to have no issues.
Okay.
And we were, the side setback and the wetlands area were pointed out. And then we looked around that area and looked at the walkway and looked at some of the trees that were discussed. And I, my opinion, I don't, we haven't actually discussed this before, is that, you know, the alternate locations are still possibility. And I, I'm very concerned about the, you know, there was a handicap issue raised at the last meeting. That, the walkway that is currently there is, it's not only sort of falling apart, the timbers are, John can speak to this, but it's definitely not handicap accessible. So, that as a rationale is hard for me to understand. If you really want to help somebody handicapped out, you have to provide not just a garage that's close to their door, but actually a pathway for them to get in. So, that's one issue. And the other issue is some of the trees that were mentioned as being somewhat precious are actually dying or dead. So, I think that there is a possibility that it could be moved over or relocated. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Yep, thank you, Von. The steps leading to the subject's residence that she says are vital to her getting to the garage, all the railroad ties are tipped ahead, and they're all like slanting downhill. So, if anybody was to step on them, they would slip right off. So, every one of them is, at least eight of them, that were just like that. So, I would agree with Von that that doesn't hold very much water. And the idea that the trees that are, the 20-inch maple and the one behind it, which was the 18-inch maple, the 18-inch maple is all broken apart, and the 20-inch maple has got a big rotted dead hole right in it. And to be honest, I would see that area to be a nice option to move the building back over 15 feet. And you would reduce the amount of area that is in the wetland setback. It was, a question was asked at the site visit, and the question was, what difference would it make whether or not the building was where it is proposed or it was changed? And I made an observation that where it's proposed, the back corner is five feet away from standing water. And if that building was moved away, it would be 15 feet away from standing water. So, to me, that was one reason why I didn't feel that that was the least impacted area where it's proposed. And I would propose moving it over as less impact.
Thank you. Peter, did you want to make any comments?
Well, one of the things that I was thinking of is that this is a, the desire is to construct something which is literally right at the edge of the wetland. And it then is an issue that if this one is allowed, other ones could be allowed too. And so to me, that becomes an issue of later enforcement, later issues that would arise. And so if it ends up being moved to a point where it is less impacting, it is going to be, I think, a much better approach.
I had visited the site back, well, before the last public hearing, and it seemed to me that there was room to facing, standing in the driveway facing North Main Street, move it further to the left and reduce the impact in the wetland areas. So, that's one of the specific things that the planning board needs to consider when we're looking at special use permits. Mike, did, I'm not sure if you went to the site or?
No, I did not go to the site visit, so I can't speak to the site specifically. But what concerns me in this application is the stated handicap status of the applicant and the rigidity of 17510C and its requirements for an alternate location. There's a clash there. If the applicant has a handicap which is, which reduces her ability to get in and out of her home safely, and the sighting of the garage as proposed would remedy that to an extent, then it would seem to me that this board could offer the applicant a reasonable accommodation and allow, in this particular case, under our understanding of ADA requirements and allowances, what would be in the case of a ZBA variance, an exception based upon handicap status. We have nothing in our ordinances that allow for reasonable accommodations. We're not required to under ADA either. But it is suggested by the feds, by the federal government, that local authorities make good faith efforts to work with persons who have handicap status when they come up against an ordinance which is inflexible according to their needs. And my concern is, in this case, that we don't lose sight of the fact that the sighting of the garage, although it violates, it appears to at any rate, because there are alternate locations to be proposed on the ground, and you heard that from the board members following their site visit, although it seems to violate the requirements of 17510C, nonetheless, if the handicap status is established, this board has the opportunity to allow for a reasonable accommodation. It would not, in my opinion, incur future difficulties with enforcement because the allowance is made specifically for a reasonable accommodation under the understanding of ADA requirements. No other applicant could come here and say, "I want an exception as well," without being able to establish handicap status and an absolute need for such an accommodation. You see my point? I'd like to hear more about, and I don't mean to pry, and it's none of my business, and it's not any of this board's business either, but if the case has been made that garage by the applicant's agent needs to be cited where it's cited because of the status of the applicant, I'd like to hear that established. And if that were the case, I think that should carry weight with this board.
Can I just ask Mike a question? So, if a handicap person can't reasonably get to the garage down a very noncompliant step system, that kind of kills the argument that, you know, we're making exceptions based on handicaps.
Well, I would disagree respectfully that it wouldn't kill the argument. The case would still remain that an accommodation could be made. It's really up to the, and the accommodation is only to be made to allow the applicant, in this case, the handicapped applicant, access to the garage. If between the house and the garage, there is an obstacle course to be dealt with, that's really on the applicant to work out. It's not on the board. I don't think the board has to concern itself with whether or not there's a perfectly smooth surface between point A and point B. The board has only to concern itself with whether allowing a building in point B, which violates an ordinance, is acceptable as a reasonable accommodation, given the handicap status of the applicant.
I want to interject. The question was asked whether or not the basis for the application was based on ADA access, and I don't believe it was.
No, it wasn't definitely not, because we have no allowance in our zoning ordinances as applied by this board for any allowance under handicap. When they went before the ZBA for their variance, they did not plead the handicap exemption. They put a very regular variance case, and they were granted their variance. Had they pled that case, I suspect they might have had an easier time of it.
Well, if, I'm not going to argue with you or say that your view is different than anybody else's, but I was up there, I did a sidewalk. I didn't feel that one place moving over 15 feet was a hardship to allow this building to be pulled out of the wetland.
With all respect, I couldn't agree with you, because I'm not the person dealing with the reduced ability.
Okay, well, some of the information that just, and that was presented to us by the applicant for this case was information, it says if the ZBA does not approve the variance, the only alternative would be to move this set of garages 20 feet further along the barn driveway. So, it sounded to me like there was some thought to do that. And then also, when I was out there, I thought, well, you know, there's a solution that has been submitted in the application. So, it sort of put us in a, you know, situation that we're looking at information from the applicant, so saying that it could be moved. Go ahead, Peter, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just looked at the distances involved, and coming from the door to the proposed site of the garage is a given distance, and moving it 15 feet to the, what, northwest along the driveway adds about 25 percent to that distance. And so it is not a huge change in the total distance which you have to get to. Not only that, it is on the flat as compared to coming downstairs or coming down from the house to the driveway.
Right. Matt, did you want to add anything, or?
No, I mean, I think at this time, it's probably best to have the applicant address these issues. But yeah, I have nothing to add. I mean, I think that Mike has hit the nail on the head with the ZBA's relationship to accessibility versus the planning boards. And I think that he's correcting his analysis, so I have nothing to add.
Okay. Mr. Coons, Dan, did you want to?
Sure.
Yeah, comment?
Yeah, good evening. Von, to comment on your issue of the trees? You probably noticed that there was new growth on both of those two trees. They have fresh buds and leaves coming out on both of those. So, they're not dead. They're not dead yet, as Monty Python would say.
Okay.
As far as impacts on the wetland by placement of the garage where it is, this is a three-acre lot, which comes out to approximately 130, 135,000 square feet. So, 525 square feet for the garage would be about half a percent of increased impervious, if I'm not mistaken. It might even be less than that.
Do you do that math in your head? Five twenty-five divided into 135,000?
It might be half of a thousandth of a percent. Or, anyway, it's minuscule. It won't have any effect on wetland functions and values. The plan for the applicant is to rebuild the steps this summer, whether it's to a ramp or a set of stairs, but it's close to ADA compliance as they can make them. And I would like to reinforce that the ZBA did decide to allow a variance based largely upon mobility issues of the applicant or one of the unit owners. So, I know you have been sitting here deciding whether you can speak for Jan and her problems getting around or not, but the ZBA did decide to make an allowance for her mobility issues. And on top of that, it is a visual issue of where you're placing the garages and sticking them right in front of the windows on the building, obstructing the view of the woods in front, so.
Have you considered moving it to the left, whether it's 10 feet or 15 feet? Have you considered that at all? Could you, I think we talked about that at the last meeting, but?
The applicant has decided that's not acceptable, so.
Okay. All right. Not acceptable to move it at all, or 15 feet, or 10, or just, no?
I'll let them speak to their.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. I'm Robert Gillette, a member of the board of the condo association, Skyridge Farm, and one of the owners seeking to build the garages. These two units, one of them would be ours. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration of all the issues involved here. Adding 15 feet of distance is 15 feet of glare ice in winter. Now, no, it's trivial, not so trivial in winter.
Okay, well, I did say 10, 15, so.
I don't know about 10. We haven't thought 10. We'd have to try to figure out what this would look like. But it would, at 15 feet or more, begin to block views from the windows, because it's a fairly, we're looking at the end of the fairly high peaked roof, and I don't know that reducing the pitch of the roof is really an option either because of the snowfall. So, it is fairly low-grade wetland. As Dan said, it does occupy or would occupy a very small percentage of the drained area. And we really don't feel that there's an alternative to that, that location. When we rebuild the steps or ramp, however it's going to work, probably both, going up to our neighbor's entrance, whether it comes down to the same entry point onto the driveway or not, we can't say at this point. So, it might move it a little further, which would even extend her walking distance. Depends on what, when we ask a qualified builder for a design, what they will recommend. So, these are our issues, too. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If not, I would entertain a motion on these special use permit.
The application has been found to be complete already?
Yeah, yes, it's been complete.
Sorry, I was not.
And, right, and it did open a public hearing. Well, the public hearing is open. Did anyone else want to comment? Okay. Okay. So, would you folks like to proceed?
I would like to address the gentleman who just spoke, the owner there. Very, very nice gentleman. His wife is very pleasant also. I have no bad feelings or disregard for anybody over there, and especially the person who needs handicap access. If the case is that the walkway may be redirected, it could be even brought closer. And that's my feeling. I really, I have nothing against these people. I have, I have the problem with the plan. And I, I feel the same as Peter said. If we allow this to happen, people, more people come in, they push the envelope, it's right on top of the water, it's right on top of the line, there's least impact area, and we're not doing our job if we're not looking out for all the other areas that don't have a voice. Because the people that have the voice, they explained what their position is, and I respect that. I'm going to make a motion to deny this application unless these people are willing to at least move it over 10 feet.
Okay, I'll second the motion, because I think clearly there are some alternate locations. And I've asked the applicant two or three times if they would consider moving it, and I didn't put a specific distance in. And at least in my mind, if we could have gotten it out of the, further out of the wetland area, I would have been more comfortable. So, I'll second the motion. Any other comments?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, if I may. I brought to the board's attention the idea of a reasonable accommodation under ADA. I thought that was an issue that the board needed to be aware of. I think it's an issue that the board needs to consider for the future, perhaps put on the work session for the future. The legislature saw fit to allow ZBA, an additional reason for granting a variance to accommodate a handicapped access person. They have not seen fit to do that with our board, but we are at liberty to allow for such an accommodation, should we want to. But that's an issue that needs legal advice, as well as our deliberation. That said.
We're looking at a special use permit for impact on the wetlands.
Mm-hmm. Understood. And I'm just, I'm, I finished my preamble.
Okay.
If I may make my point.
All right, sorry.
What I did not hear from the applicant tonight, or the two times before that the application was presented here, that I was present, was any strong argument for ADA access being necessary for the sighting of the garage. That I find disappointing. I'm going to abstain on this vote. And that's all I can say.
Okay.
I have an additional comment.
Okay.
If, in fact, it were moved over 10 feet, it would still require the ZBA exception that was granted. It won't be five feet from the lot line, it will be 15. It's still in violation. So, the ZBA will have been, you know, recognized that there was some relief given. I think we would be recognized for giving some relief. We don't have a design of the new walkway, so we don't know where it ends up. It could be directed toward the garage, slightly shifted over. That's an unknown. It's a choice. So, I'd have to say I'm not in favor of granting an allowance for ADA access, because for one, it hasn't been presented that way. For two, we don't have an ADA ramp here at all. And I have nurtured a number of trees, you know, beyond their useful life and tried to get them to live. But, you know, those trees are not going to be there for very long. So, that's questionable.
Okay, thank you.
I would also suggest that if the garage is moved, the 10 or 15 feet along the driveway, that ends up being closer to the other steps, the other entrance to the other unit. And we know that times change, and other people may have the same kind of access issues. And so therefore, it may end up being 10 years, 15 years, a new owner. Those are the people who are, who need extra assistance. And so therefore, it is, you know, it is, to me, the idea that this is being granted for something which is important, but it's not necessarily going to be something which is in actuality 30 or 40 years from now. And so this, this ends up being something which goes with the property forever, and it impacts the way that our zoning regulations are being applied.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the question, then. Owing support of the motion to not grant the special use permit for the garage, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Not in support. And opposed, abstentions? Okay, and I voted for the motion. Okay, so, we can continue now with the site plan review, which I will read into the record. This is Skyridge Farm Condominium Association, continued public hearing from April 16th, 2019, for site plan review for the construction. And the item says for two garages, but this will be for one garage. TaxMAP 188-63, case 2019-08. And so this will be for the one garage, which is on the entry road. We open?
I think you need to be very careful here. The application in front of you is for two garages, and I have some concern that with the denial that was just issued, that it's difficult to separate the two as part of this application that has been noticed to the abutters. And I'm not trying to be a procedural difficulty, but we have, you know, we've noticed the application a certain way, it's been presented a certain way. I believe it needs to be amended formally if the board's going to proceed with it. I would be uncomfortable with a condition on any kind of approval that says only this garage and not that garage is approved. And I, again, I hate to be difficult, but I think it's.
Okay, well, it's clear that we are not approving the.
Right. And I think because the scope of the site plan involves both garages, it's an issue. It's been noticed as such, and that's. It's been noticed as such, and that's no longer the reality of the application.
Okay, can the, can the applicant amend the application at this time?
I would recommend against that, but if the board is comfortable with that amendment...
Okay.
Yeah, no, yeah, and I, I think that it's, I don't think it's a procedural issue, but I, it's all the board's comfort level with accepting an amendment at this time. And whether you feel that is a significant enough amendment that it makes the case notification and the materials in the application null and void.
Okay. We, we had accepted the application as complete last time, opened the public hearing. And so then what would you suggest? That we continue this for an amended?
I, I don't feel that you can continue the application because, again, it's, it's been, continuance would not require new notice to the abutters or changing of the case. So I, I really unfortunately think the only way to proceed is to, and the, the applicant has time, but submit an amended plan for the June meeting. I think that is the best way to proceed for the one garage if they wish to do so. But I don't feel that you have the option to amend it to include one of the garages only.
Matt, at that time, it would be possible for them to bring back the new position of this other garage?
If they decide in the next couple days before the application deadline, they certainly could amend the special use permit and the site plan review if they choose to move the garage ten, fifteen, whatever they so choose.
Well, wait a minute, that would be a new special use permit.
Yep, it would be both a new site...
You would not be able to accommodate them in June.
That's correct. They would not meet the June, sorry, that's one, one day off. They would not meet the special use permit deadline, but would meet the site plan review if they choose to remove one of the garages.
Right, but yes, I mean, that is an option.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
I, I wouldn't feel comfortable unbundling these two applications and handling the second one as if the first one had not already been denied. I think it's really up to the applicant now to come back to us with an amended application for a site plan review.
Okay, well, but the application, I hate to prolong this, but the application is before us. What do we now need to do?
I, I would recommend that you deny without prejudice so the applicant could return.
All right. Okay.
Yep.
And the public hearing is open? Should I...
I, I think that the application, the applicant may wish to respond to the position, but, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I did read it into the record, the public hearing is, is open. You've, you've heard Dan, the situation that we're in, and would you like to make some comments? Or, or the applicant?
Again, thank you for your careful consideration. I would have to take this issue back to our other owners to ask what they would like to do now. What would be the deadline for submitting an amended application if we were to do so?
So, yeah, the, the special use, sorry, the site plan application deadline would be next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
But again, as the board is sort of noting, that would be for if you want to proceed with one garage only. If you want to proceed with both garages...
And move ten feet, for example?
If, yeah, exactly. If you want to proceed with both, then you would need to submit both a site plan review and a special use permit. And that would need to be done really for the July meeting, which would be a June, a June deadline. And we can communicate exactly when that is.
So it's either Tuesday or July, or June?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Okay. Do you want to make any more comments? Are you all set? Okay. And then I'll, I'll make a motion to deny the site plan review for Sky Ridge Farm Condominium Association based on the noticing requirements where this application is for two garages, and we only can consider one.
Is that without prejudice?
And deny without prejudice, yes.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, folks, for your, your patience and participation. Okay, the next application, Edward Morgan III and Diane Morgan. It says, Justin Morgan.
If you could share your agenda.
Justin Martin.
Yeah, Justin informed me today that there's an error in his name. He wishes to file, he wishes to file a complaint, I believe, so, yeah, sorry, sorry, Justin, for that.
Okay. Edward Morgan, Diane Morgan, and Justin Martin.
And the board has no issue of me participating in this because I do work with Justin, obviously.
Okay.
Just, I want to make that clear. Obviously, I don't feel it's a conflict of interest, but I don't like him anyway, so it doesn't really matter, so.
Okay, this is, right, right. This is a boundary line adjustment at eighteen King Street, tax map two zero three dash three seven and three eight, case two zero one nine dash one zero. Okay.
Good evening. Randy Tetro, Norway Plains, for the applicants.
And you have some waivers also that you're requesting.
I guess the Justin part was overlooked. We came before the board almost a year ago today to do a preliminary discussion on this application. And it's taken this long for the, the applicants to do a purchase and sale and get everything signed and so forth. The reason coming before, to come before the board was twofold. One was because it was a reconfiguration of non-conforming lots. And that can be subjective, as you know, for the criteria of that section. The second reason was because we wanted to be able to get the board's feeling on requesting a waiver for full site features for the remaining property. That discussion took place at that meeting before they, before the applicants decided to pay to proceed to do the surveying and so forth. So the parcel is located on King Street, lot two oh three thirty-eight. Justin Martin is a small lot with a hundred and sixty-eight foot frontage on King Street. It's about a ten thousand five hundred square foot lot. The lot in the rear, that's owned by the Morgans, is a landlocked parcel. They also own an adjacent, an adjacent parcel that goes out to Filterbed Road. That lot is around just over two acres in size. This area is serviced by municipal water and sewer, so although it's the residential zone with two utilities, I think we had this discussion before, that the lot size can be reduced from an acre to a half acre. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes. And so this proposal brings the Martin lot into conformity acreage-wise, and it already had frontage. The remaining lot would still be conforming acreage-wise, but non-conforming frontage-wise. That said, the proposal is, again, to add fourteen thousand seven hundred and nineteen square feet from the, out of the larger lot to the smaller lot, making the smaller lot just over a half acre in size. Frontage remain the same. Again, it's town water and sewer. The lot on King Street is developed with a house, and the remaining lot is not. There was a question raised by the, there was a question raised by the planner review regarding the flood zone. And I, I prepared a, a plan for that you guys could look at. Basically, the flood zone is a small portion of the lot in the rear that is in the A flood zone, which is on elevation-based. But it is out behind there, next to the, next to the rock that runs in the back.
Any questions, folks?
Nope.
That was one thing that I, that was mentioned in the planner review that I caught. And again, the minutes of the meeting on May eighth, two thousand eighteen, we discussed the reason for the adding of the lot, which is basically to give the house lot a little backyard, at least some room around the house. They went, the, the two owners negotiated out the size that they wanted to give them, which is a little bit smaller than what I brought to you guys the first time. I think it was like point six acres the first time. So now it's, it's down about ten thousand square feet. But that's what they agreed on, that's what we're showing. Most of the lot is already monumented. All we'll need to do is set one new corner should it get approved. And I don't know if we should have a discussion regarding the setbacks. The setbacks listed on my planner, the residential zone setbacks, which are normally a little bit larger because it's one acre lot size. And given the situation with the B C component, the board in, in reconfiguration of non-conforming lots can, can determine if they want to see the setbacks differently than what we're proposing. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Do you want me to address that?
Yes, and then you need to address the waivers.
Yes.
So the, the, this is, again, an oddity within our zoning, where the utility-based zoning that we employ here, under that zoning, this is a lot within the village residential zone despite the fact that it's been shown on the residential zone in past zoning mapping. It clearly has access to water and sewer, and therefore, I think, the, the board does have the flexibility under the reconfiguration of non-conforming lots provision to set different setbacks. I don't know if the board has ever taken advantage of that. I would not recommend it here. I would recommend that you stick to the traditional zoning, which would be the V R zoning. But I think that...
And not the ones that you've mentioned? Is that what you're saying?
Not the, I would, I would, the zoning, underlying zoning is village residential. I would recommend that you leave the underlying zoning what it is. I would recommend that you don't set specific setbacks as part of any motion this evening, although you do have that ability under this portion of the ordinance. Just to kind of get to the fundamental issue here, we had gone back and forth a bit about the reconfiguration of non-conforming lots and whether we were increasing the conformity of this back landlocked lot. My opinion is that the non-conformity of that lot is the road frontage, and that this adjustment does not exacerbate that non-conformity in any way. It also does not bring that lot to a place where it does not conform to the minimum lot size of the underlying zoning. So I, I feel this is a totally appropriate proposal. I would just note that, you know, the, the standard is pretty clear under section C that I've cited here. You need to make a finding that the adjustment sort of results in an appropriate planning situation, which I think in this case it does. And subject to the waiver requests, the three that are in front of you, I have no additional comments.
I, I'm just concerned about the, the setbacks in your planner review.
Yeah, the, the setbacks in my planner review are incorrect. They should be shown as V R setbacks. I apologize for that error.
No, okay.
Matt, any future construction would be, would have to follow normal setback rules? Is that right?
On the Martin lot, any construction would have to, to meet the setbacks. And as far as the Morgan lot, that lot, because it has no access for building construction at this time at least, construction really isn't a viable option there, but it would, of course, be subject to whatever setbacks exist once it connects to utilities.
Thank you. Okay, if you could just comment on the waivers?
Yep. The, the waiver that was requested was for varying sections one seventy-four, seven, B, D, and A, which is a full survey of the remaining property, which there is a reference plan where that's already been surveyed. There's a reason for that. Requiring the site features, wetlands and topo, we've kind of got the wetlands already as I showed you. Again, this lot is serviced by town water and sewer. Should they, should they come up with permitted viable access from either Filterbed Road or otherwise? So there really was no reason for, on this application, as we weren't proposing any development on the rear to, you know, do full topos, wetlands and soils. So those were the waivers that we asked for, and those were the ones we discussed a year ago with the board to at least get an opinion on that. So that's what we requested in writing.
Okay, and these waivers don't have any impact whatsoever on the application?
Yeah, not in this case, they don't.
Okay. Entertain a motion for the granting of the three, three waivers based on the testimony we just heard?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, with the granting, did anybody have any questions thus far? Okay. With the granting of the waivers, the application is considered complete? So, thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded and seconded to accept this application as complete. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay. So I'm going to open the public hearing. If anyone is here that wants to comment on, on this application, now's your opportunity to do that. Everyone okay? Okay. Then Planning Board members, you have any questions? Matt, do you have some conditions for us to consider?
I do have some conditions to recommend. Conditions one through five. Condition one being the incorporation of the boundary line adjustment plan as presented and as amended to the day of this approval for Justin Martin and Edward and Diane Morgan. The second condition being the submission of the Mylar Plan for the Carroll County Registry of Deeds, and the payment of all recording fees applicable to that. Condition three, the applicant shall be responsible for monumentation, submission of a certificate of monumentation to our office, and updated plans should any updates be necessary. All the documentation submitted in the application package is obviously incorporated as part of the approval. And then condition five, final boundary line adjustment plan shall be submitted with an original stamp and date and signature from a licensed land surveyor. And all granted waivers shall be added as plan notes. This is going to be a procedural change. They'll be implementing any waivers that we grant, I'm going to have them added to the plan set.
Oh, okay. That's good. And so basically, what we've looked at is the reconfiguration of a non-conforming lot, and the reconfiguration makes this lot, the smaller lot, more conforming. Therefore, we have justification in the zoning ordinance to grant the, this application, so...
We need to also make a formal finding, do we not?
I, I think it's probably best that you do, for the record.
Since the ordinance suggests that we ought to?
Yep. Okay. Yep.
Could the planner suggest some wording to that effect, or should we just simply take it directly from the ordinance?
I would take it directly from the ordinance. If you feel that this, this provision has been met, that, you know, provided that the adjustment results in the same or fewer number of lots, or to increase the total area or frontage of a non-conforming lot by joining land from a contiguous conforming lot, in this case, it's not a contiguous conforming lot, they're both non-conforming lots. And so I think that you, in my opinion, I recommend that it does meet that provision of the zoning ordinance.
And it makes this lot become more conforming, a smaller lot?
That's correct. Yep. It doesn't, it doesn't fully bring any of the lots into, into full conformity, but it does increase the conformity of one of the lots.
The suggested finding language is in the last four sentences of the italicized paragraph number three. Should we not follow that language?
I do not believe you should follow that language because that language pertains to setting of setbacks.
And did we not have a discussion regarding the setbacks, and we agreed that we were going to assume the setbacks as discussed earlier?
That's, I understand your opinion, but I, the way I read this section of the ordinance is that you shall have the authority, but you don't have to invoke that authority to set the setbacks, an alternative setback here. So I, I don't need you, I don't believe you need to address that provision, number three.
You can pass over on this?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this application with the conditions. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Randy, were you going to?
Don't, I'm just...
Oh, oh, okay. All in favor? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, next application is T-Mobile Northeast LLC. This is a public hearing, site plan review for antennas and a service cabinet at 16 McManus on the existing water tower, town-owned water tower. This is tax map 244-63TR, case 201911. The applicant does need a variance. The applicant was present at ZBA where there was no quorum, was at the-
I will, yeah, so I'll address that quickly. The ZBA had a scheduled variance hearing for three, three variances last evening. The ZBA was unable to achieve quorum due to some unforeseen scheduling conflicts. They have scheduled a special meeting for both applications that were considered last night due to the circumstances to May 20th, which will be the third Monday, or, I'm not sure if it's the third Monday, but, May 20th at 7:00 P.M. Typically, the planning board does not see these sorts of cases until the ZBA action has occurred. With that said, it's fully appropriate for you to consider an approval, and should we move in that direction this evening, I will be recommending a condition associated with incorporating any approval by the ZBA, and also recognizing that any modification to the plan would trigger further planning board review. But please just note that the ZBA, the ZBA variances have not been granted as of this moment.
Okay.
Actually, and just one other item as well. I should be clear about the scope of the planning board's review tonight. Clearly, the notice language includes both the antenna and cabinet work. However, RSA 12K in the state statute deals with both co-location and substantial modification, two different parts of a P, of an application of this type. The co-location on the tower, or the antennas, or the tank in this case, are really handled through a building permitting process, so that is not part of the board's review. The board's review here is really related to the dimensional expansion on the ground that substantially changes the character of the site, in my opinion. Therefore, the substantial modification under RSA 12K, I feel, is the purview of the board this evening.
Okay.
And I think that Mr. Hodder may disagree with me, based on his-
I, I am, no comment.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll take a no comment, that's all right.
Why don't we have, hear from who?
Madam Chairperson, members of board, thank you. My name is Adam Brilard. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, T-Mobile Northeast LLC. With me is, excuse me, is Jeff Delacore. Jeff is with Center Line Communications. He's a representative of the applicant's, a agent for site acquisition. So he finds the sites, works with the landlords, property owners, gets the deals done. Also with me is Ricky Karaoke. Ricky is part of the applicant's radio frequency department. So these guys have some answers if you have questions to technical, questions that you may have in connection with the application. So we're here in connection with a site plan in front of the board to co-locate a personal wireless service facility on the existing water tank located at 16 Manis Road. As the board knows, there are three other carriers on that water tank, so we'd be the fourth. Our proposal is substantially similar to what is existing there with respect to the antenna on the, on the actual tank, and cable tray, and, and I think what's most germane to this board is the cabinetry at the base of the tank. The jurisdictional question has been, has been in front of the town, and we've worked with, with the director of planning for a few months now to kind of figure that out. And so, you know, I understand there may still be some questions. At the end of the day, I think what the applicant's intent is, is to work with the board, to, understanding that there is the SB 101 and 6409, but also the town zoning regulations. And it's the intent, like I said, to work with the board, come up with a game plan with a site plan review, obtain our variances from the zoning board of adjustments, and move to building permit. So with that, I think I can go into the, the proposal in terms of what's in front of the board. And I can talk about the antennas real quick, and I'll get a little bit more detail what's going to be on the ground. So we're proposing to install four sets of two-panel antennas each, so a total of eight-panel antennas, very similar and like-kind to what's existing on the tank. We're also proposing to install eight RRU's, or radio, remote radio units, or remote radio heads, again, similar to what's on the tank there as well. We're also going to propose to conceal our conduit and our coaxial cabling in a cable tray that will be boxed in, very similar to what's there as well. Run that down inside of the water tank to our proposed equipment. All of that equipment on the, on the tank will be painted the identical color of the antennas that are there. The equipment cabinet, or the, the equipment platform that we're proposing within the compound is going to be located to the south, south side of the, of the tank, so directly to the south of the tank, and in between the tank and the fenced-in compound. So it will be located inside the fenced compound and directly below the tank. It's different, or, it's different than some of the other carriers, equipment that is on the facility or inside the compound, because this is a, it's not a free prefabricated shelter. This is a kind of exterior cabinetry. We're reducing any impervious surfaces by going with a raised grate and putting the, our cabinets on top of that grate. So the grate area will be approximately six by 20, six feet by 20 feet. And then, we propose to put one, basically, computer cabinetry, which is really the radio cabinets that, that, that change the technology, so that it goes from wireless to landline. And then, we'll have two cabinets. One will be a battery backup, and the other will be a RAC and PPC cabinetry, so it's more brains to the, to the equipment. The, at the end of the day, the difference in, in the impervious surface from that is about 33 square, square feet, so not substantial. My understanding is that, based on the, our study, the facility is already as a whole, that property is already, has already exceeded its impervious, and so by extending that by 33 isn't, isn't significant. We'll, we'll get into that with the zoning board, because that's one of our variances. This, this facility does fall within the setback requirements, or this, these, these cabinets fall within the setback requirements of the regulations, and so we have asked for that relief from the zoning board of adjustments as well. That's generally our proposal.
Thank you. No waivers? You're requesting no?
Um, no waivers.
All right, questions? Matt?
I would just note, kind of at the risk of expressing support for the application, that the town has worked extensively with multiple parties on putting together this application, simply because of the, the presence of the town's equipment within this enclosure, and, and obviously, the town's asset being the water tank, which is, continues to be a form of redundancy for our water system. We've had several onsite meetings with Dave Ford and water department staff, as well as the electric department. We've gone through two design iterations of where to place the cabinet. This was ultimately the best decision. And one of the sort of interesting things about this is that this is being placed on pads, and the reason for that is due to its proximity to the cemetery, which is just to the south of the site, and there are restrictions on excavation as a result. So this will be placed above grade, and that's sort of an odd feature of this location, and it's very constrained square footage.
Screen.
What's that?
That's screen.
Yes, yep, there is significant vegetated screening on this side of the facility. Obviously, this being the side that's not directly exposed to school traffic where this is proposed. Generally, I find the application complete. I did have some questions about lighting, which I believe Adam may address in just a few moments, but I think those will be easily clarified. And I find the application complete.
I have just a question about lot numbers.
Yeah. Is this, are you using the old subdivision plan?
I'm using the-
Or the old plot plan?
The C1, for instance. Sheet C1.
Yep.
Just looks like there's a house on a lot with the same number as, I gather, the cemetery. And is this on the lot with the cemetery? On the lot with the house?
This, this is on its own lot. This is on its own small square lot that exists there. That's why the setback relief is necessary, because the lot is very small in nature.
And this lot next to it is a cemetery?
Correct. Well, the cemetery is not an actual lot, it's just, it exists on an existing lot of record.
So there are-
Brewster, probably.
Correct.
So there are two lots with the number 244062000?
Let me get further information on that. Let me get back to you in one second here, Vaughn.
I'm just, I'm going to guess that there's a typo.
Yeah, there may, and is that on, that's on the Holden Engineering Plan, I assume?
It's the plot plan C1, is what I'm looking at, but it's also on C2.
There is, in our tax data, it's sort of odd, the cemetery is shown as its own lot of record, but I don't believe it actually is. So for labeling purposes, you will get two labels, but it really is only one lot of record, that's my understanding.
So it's on the same lot as the-
It's a labeling error, yes.
On the house lot.
The way I read it is that spot and the tax map number just reaffirms it's part of the lot.
Yeah, I think it's sourced from our tax map data, which is, is confusing in the way that it's numbered, but I, yeah, I believe the cemetery just simply exists on the lot of record, and just be double labeled.
Is the water tower now at capacity? Is the number of antennas, or isn't that initial?
That's, that's been a critical question, and I also wanted to mention that I believe I have authorization to speak on behalf of Dave Ford, that he is comfortable with the proposal. And we've had significant discussion about the structural integrity of the tank with the addition of this equipment. You'll see that as part of my review, I have recommended that we just get a review of the structurals that were presented with the application, although we've already had some review, and clearly, the summary indicates that we, we do believe the tank will withstand this additional equipment. So Dave Ford is not concerned at this time. I guess I'll, I'll leave my answer that way. But it's certainly adding weight to the tank is a concern, especially when it's a town asset.
That's where I'm going to pick up. I was curious to know, the standoff brackets, what do you do to attach them? Do you have to actually drill the tank?
It's going to be welds.
Stud welds, yep.
Yep, yep. But there is some concern about the nature of those welds. It's not outright concern about it, but we, we, and you see in my review, I've suggested a preconstruction meeting to clearly understand how exactly those welds are going to be done, and we may potentially request that the welds be looked at, but that will be determined during the building permitting process. But there's, there's definitely concern about the manner in which these are being attached. But not total resistance to the approach.
And would, would you like to comment on the lighting, or have someone-
Sure. The Cooper lighting is, is a motion sensor lighting, identical to what a residential dwelling would have when you're walking up the driveway or side door. So it would go on and off as a technician came in, and then they could set it at a certain amount of time to keep it on for when, for when they are on-site. So it does have a, it's dark sky compliant, so that it won't shine up in the air, or left and right, it'll stay right. It's, you know, it's designed to flood right where it's supposed to, right on the compound.
And it's only on when service is happening? It's not on all night?
That's right. Only, it's motion censored, so it'll shut off when there's no, no motion, correct.
Okay, then, it appears that the application is-
I have one other question. The vegetated screen, which is there, that will be maintained into the future?
Yep, I was there today, and we don't need to remove any of the vegetation, that's all.
And, but, but when the trees grow, or they grow bigger, or die off, they would get replaced?
What, well, just quickly, quickly on that, that's on the abutting property. That vegetation's on the abutting property, so I want to be clear that the applicant is not in control of whether the trees die or do not. But there, there is certainly vegetation there, but they can't, I don't believe that they can be held to a condition that it be replanted if it become an issue.
Anything else? And the application is, is complete? Somebody would, would make a motion to that?
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, and I'll open the public hearing. If any member of the public wants to comment on, on this application, now is the, your opportunity to do that. I guess no, no one's interested in commenting. Okay, Planning Board members, any other questions, comments?
Just one comment, Madam Chairman. Issues that I would like to have raised regarding this application and prior applications to hang RFE antennae off of the water tower, which is in the same property and pretty adjacent to high school, the middle school, and Crescent Lake School, I cannot raise, because our state statutes forbid me to raise them. They're not germane to the discussion here. Environmental health issues cannot be raised. Our legislators, in their wisdom, decided that local boards, and our federal legislators, in their wisdom, decided that local boards should have no input whatsoever on applications of this sort regarding health and safety of the members of the public near the antennae, which are going to be continually broadcasting, whatever it is they're broadcasting. We are all aware, I'm sure those of us who read the newspapers, of studies, both in the United States and overseas, that are of some concern regarding RFE, radio frequency emissions, particularly with, as a concern developing individuals, young children. Our water tower, where the antennas are hanging, is right there by the school. That concerns me, but at this point, I have to stop. I cannot raise these issues, although I have at least managed to get them somewhat in the record. I think it's unfortunate that the wisdom that's shown by our legislators is oftentimes not as wise as that of the common men on the street. Thank you.
Do you want to make any other comments before I go to Matt Sullivan?
No, no comment.
Okay, okay.
Sure you don't want to comment on that? So if, if the board should wish to proceed, I've recommended a few conditions of approval. I'm going to add one to those that are in your, your review. The first condition is the incorporation of the plans as amended to the day of this approval, and I've enlisted, I've listed plans 1 through 16 here, including the two survey plans, also as plans of, of record. Obviously, the applicant shall be responsible for the payment of all recording fees, that is condition number 2. Condition number 3, the construction observation agreement. This will really be on the, the actual construction side of things, but it's not really a site work-related COA here. I am actually comfortable removing this condition if the board is comfortable. There really isn't site work necessary for this, and I prefer any review costs be issued via the building permitting process. So I would recommend removing number 3, if you're comfortable. And condition number, new condition number 3, no construction or site work for the amended site plan may be undertaken until the preconstruction meeting with town staff. New condition number 4, all the documentation in the application package will be incorporated as part of the approval. And a new condition number 5, essentially will read, "This approval shall be conditional upon the ZBA action related to the granting of three variance requests and any condition imposed therein. Any modification of the proposed project shall be subject to further review and approval by the planning board." That would be condition number 5.
Okay, thank you.
How do we handle the concerns about the wells of the antennae hanging on them?
So that, that will be addressed during the building permitting process. We still have to discuss with Dave Ford what security, whether it be financial or inspection related, he needs to feel comfortable with the welding that's going to go on. I had a conversation with him late last week about that very item, and he'd like to, before he makes a decision on how exactly we protect ourselves, he'd like to have a meeting with the applicant to determine that.
Eliminating, eliminating condition number 3 does not-
No, we have the ability, no, we have the ability through our building permitting process if we feel it necessary to have independent third-party inspections, to have those inspections done.
Okay. The conditions indicated, be willing to entertain a motion to approve the...
So moved.
Motion's been made?
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Abstentions? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next application, Green Mountain Realty LLC. This is for a site plan review at 38 Filterbed Road for a warehouse and an office building. Tax map 203-15, case 2019112. And basically, this is a non-conforming site that is being brought into more conformance, and therefore, our site plan review application allows us to hear this application.
Yeah, this is a specific provision under 17543(c), the non-conforming uses provision, that allows for a change of a non-conforming use to a more conforming use, subject to site plan review approval. I think everybody is familiar with the site, absent the site visit that we did not do here. And with that, pass it off to the applicant, I guess, to address it.
Again, good evening. Randy Tatero for the applicant. Norway Plains Associates is the surveyor and civil component of record on this application. The owner, Mr. Vic Druin, is there, and his attorney, Christopher Boat, just for reference. So I'll start out by saying, we were contracted by the owner to do a retracement survey, site feature survey, back in 2018, before the parcel was demoed, so that we could locate all existing features, do a base plan for future planning. Parcel was surveyed, everybody knows where the parcel is, right? It's just to the west of the sewer treatment plant, Paul Kimball's Sawmill property. So originally, back in 97, I believe, Don Volta London Design did a survey on there for the Kimbells when they were redoing, when the town was redoing Filterbed Road in the late 90s. So, but since then, we've gone in 2018 and did a complete retracement boundary survey, located all the site features and so forth. Recently, we were hired to do a site plan for this property under the site review regulations. A little bit different insofar as the building, the existing, the new building was already there. But we do have all the information on what was there before. And what I'd like to do quickly is outline that information with the board, with their permission, as far as what was there existing, what was there existing coverage, what was there existing building coverage versus what is being proposed. So with that, you can see the drawing. Hopefully, you guys can see it pretty good. I made it as a presentation tool. But you can see, the darker orange is the building that exists now. The lighter brown and orange that's underneath there is where the buildings were originally, the buildings that covered the site.
So this is where the existing building is. Lighter colors of where the buildings were before. That is what's being proposed.
Okay, Randy, you can take the mic with you. That probably would be, I know.
So the, this is what's being proposed. This is existing building, and this is proposed future location. And this was, and this was what was there originally. So just to quick, and if you want me to go back and forth, let me know, and I can, I can go back and forth on that. But generally, that's what was covered back before this application. This is what's being proposed, and this kinda shows both. It's a little more busy, but I think you guys can get the idea. So generally, generally, the existing coverage, buildings, gravel areas, pads, foundations, whatever, was 74%. The existing lot size, I think, I believe, is 1.07 acres. So 74% of that comes out to, I think, about 34, 5. It's all on the stuff you got, but I can go through it again. The former building, former, or the coverage of the buildings was around 21.8%, about 22%. So what's being proposed, that includes all of, which includes all of this area versus all of that area that was there originally. Like I mentioned, the existing, the former coverage was 74%. Proposed coverage is 61%. The zoning coverage is 30%, just for a reference. In the residential zone, because this is a residential zone, the normal coverage, you know, if we've been through before on the zoning, is 30%. The building coverage, former building coverage was 21.8, and the new building coverage would be 20. So it's close, but it's a, you know, and existing and proposed is a total of 20%. So this building, in the proposed future, even though that's not what's being approved tonight, I just wanted to be able to show that it still was under the coverage. Is everybody clear on that? So it amounts to about a decrease of about 1.82% in the former coverage and the proposed coverage. So that said, you know, the lot is an acre in that zone. It is, has the required frontage, so it's a conforming lot. It's just non-conforming by use. So in this particular case, water and sewer, it has town water. The town sewer can't be connected to, believe it or not, even though we're right next to the sewer, because it's a high-pressure main, it's big, and it's not something they can tap into with a small residential line. So we went through that during our multiple TRC meetings and talked with Dave about that. So we talked about that back last year, and we, so we did a septic system design for a small 300 gallon per day septic, which shows on the plans. It's all approved by the state. That's located, well, you got it in your plans, but it's located right here. You can see it outlined. So because of the sewer connection issue, we've got a small commercial residential, commercial septic system approved. A kinda paraphrase from the narrative that we wrote, which is, it's located at 38 Filterbed Road, Green Mountain Realty LLC is the owner of record. This, the application is for a commercial warehouse and a small office area, as shown on the plans, outlined on the plans. Is the only use being proposed for this. And the parcel, obviously, is located next door to the treatment plant, and it's in the manufactured housing overlay district. The original parcel had three main structures that were used for warehousing, mechanics operations, chipping, sawmill. The prior structures were in, you know, fair to poor condition, and the remainder of the site was covered with the gravel, as you've seen, and junk and concrete pads and so forth. So there wasn't any real landscaping, the landscaping was nonexistent. But there is, what was left was an existing strip, vegetative strip along the side, which is the only side that borders, you know, a residential use. That will be a discussion for later. So the prior structures did not adhere to the setbacks in some instances. This, it was pretty much the same entrance, as you can see on this plan. It just was a little bit bigger. And what you'll also notice on this plan is you can see the original footprint of the original building. This was discussed originally, when Bill and Bermanit was discussed. So we pulled it in to meet the setback, and, you know, the drip edge and the setback on the side. They pulled it in about nine feet at the farthest point. And you can see how that looks under there. So the rest of the setbacks are as shown. So the rest of the buildings were inside that. I'll go back to the front sheet. So that gives you a basic idea of before, what's being proposed. So Filterbed Road's Class 5 Town Road, entrance is gonna stay the same. There were some discussions at the TRC level with Dave regarding the grading and the crowning of that road for drainage purposes, but I'll continue on with the drainage, if you want me to. So that was, there were some questions at the last TRC regarding that, and we provided Dave with a grading plan that assures that no water will go out onto Filterbed Road, and that this is crowned and taking appropriate steps for that. Let's see. The... We've gone over the utilities. There's underground electric, and it's underground power in the front of the building, as shown on the plans, comes up in... That's just the existing features plan when we first went there. And that's the existing survey feature plan that shows what was there in 2018, before any demo occurred on the site. So the utilities are shown running on this side, and they connect to the building up in that area. And what's, and what's being proposed is a paved area located, as shown right here, to the immediate use of this building. We've done the ADA handicap meets that. We've got the parking spaces. You can look on the criteria. I believe it's a certain amount for a certain amount of square footage for the building. It's a 60 by 80 building. And then there was additional space for the office component. So I think we required, believe it or not, we required three spaces, and I think we got six, plus the handicap, if you look at the parking requirements. Any questions there? Okay. And as far as, just generally, just generally, as far as the drainage goes, again, if we were starting on a blank sheet, and we were starting with no non-conformity, stuff like that, the drainage threshold would be a little different as far as, you know, the drainage requirements in the site review regulations. In this particular case, what we're trying to do is trying to make it less of a problem than it already was. And in this particular case, for people who know the area, and Dave Ford, we had discussions with Dave about this. The drainage going up to the cell tower site comes down through like this, and it comes down this way right now. Even though this, we're doing less coverage and so forth, as far as the impervious goes, what we tried to do is get a level spread of swale in here, in a small detention area, to try to slow this down and pick up some of it, and still let it trickle out where it's going down to this catch basin, and eventually down to the wetland and behind, where Mr. Devila had his place, and it goes down to the main bay. So there's some photos in that I think were in the packet that shows an overall, that shows, that shows an overall view. So you can kinda see where the drainage comes down, goes across the road, goes back into the sweatman complex, and ends up towards Back Bay. So we, in discussions with Dave Ford on that, we were pretty, we felt pretty good about what we were doing, because there's not much drainage that's left going this way. The majority of it comes this way, and the little bit of sheet runoff, the little bit of sheet runoff that we have for the driveway is not the majority, and should be able to be serviced by the existing catch basin and the existing culverts. Dave had a question about the culvert, whether it was plastic, at one of the first DRC meetings. It is, it's in good shape, 15 inch, so there's no issue with the capacity in that area. So that's the basic drainage. Existing drainage comes, splits in this area, and this is gonna go this way. And this is gonna stay in the swale that's in this wooded, vegetated area between the, between this and the residence, and it goes out to this culvert currently. The rest of this will sheet off. You can see the drainage patterns. Guys are used to that now. And it kinda goes this way, and this one will go into this catch basin. These catch basins are not connected, as we originally thought. When we did it in the winter, we had to go back and reinvestigate that, and they're actually separate. This comes down and goes this way. It's a little bit of flat drainage that gets into this off of Filterbed, and then anything that will sheet off of here will go across this culvert and go in the direction it's going now. So that's the general drainage patterns. We've got drip edge around the building, as far as stormwater management. And again, the site is now just gravled in this area. This is what's being proposed to be paved. There's been some discussion with Matt on timeframe for that kinda stuff. There was a question in Matt's plan and review that we got, I think, on Monday, and...
You gave me a hard time there?
It was, it had to do with the parking spaces. We were before the board with accidents...
It's karma, it's karma, Randy, right there.
The spaces that we showed were nine by 18, and they were supposed to be nine by 19. So what we had to do was we had to move it about a foot closer to the building, so that we made sure that we could keep this width, 24 feet, as we've shown. Everybody kinda understand that? Sorry about that. So that was one of the things that came up in the plan and review, and we'll get to the last one after I take whatever questions you guys have. As far as the application goes. Again, the, the, the component that we were tasked with was to try to provide a grading and drainage plan and a proposed site plan for the, this existing use.
Easy, easy question for you. On the, on the left-hand side of the property, you said there's a swale going down between Stargate fence, which is the neighbor's line right there, so...
The residence's driveway, and you can see, you can kinda see where that starts and goes up through like that. That's that, where that area is. And this is actually a view from before this got tore down. And you can see that, you know, this was raised, and it's a little bit of a swale that runs down through there, which would be located right in this area. That's the old side of the original song.
Is there volume there? Is there volume there?
It's mostly just rerun. There's not really a, it doesn't get really defined, a little bit down in this area right by the main thing. It was, the bushes, just all there, so, that's really all there is for... Time to see it on here as well.
Yep.
So you can see it? So you can see it? So it's just a general, it's a general swale that goes out to that culvert? And that's being left open, I'm not messing with that. Be a little bit of water coming this way that'll get into it, that's doing that now. All we did initially was to crown it so it didn't go right into the street.
Thank you.
Yep.
You all set, John?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anything else now or do you want to hear from Matt?
Yeah, just a, just a few brief comments. I mean, obviously this is a challenging site in the sense that the existing nonconformity of it stretches beyond just the use, but also the drainage, the, you know, really all the site features that existed before. I've tried to sort of tailor my review the best way possible to recommend how it conforms with the site plan review regulations, recognizing that much of this is an improvement, but not full conformance with those regulations. I think the board will understand that. I did note some, a few potential questions. Parking has been addressed, no issue there, just a simple plan amendment, I think that's necessary. The buffering again is sort of odd in this case. Our buffering requires a certain level between residential and commercial uses, but again, I think that based on the improvement, there's, it's, it's an improvement to the lot and strict conformance with the standards.
That was one question I had.
Yeah.
I mean, I, it seems for nonconforming and they're making it more conforming by adding some buffering.
In my opinion, it's compliant. I just wanted to make it clear to the board what the standards are, but yeah, it is, it's something that our ordinance doesn't clearly, or our regulations don't clearly contemplate that maybe they should, that if you're improving something, bring it closer into conformity. I think that's, I think that's something the board supports within their regulations. Randy addressed drainage, erosion control, utilities, lighting, all of those have been provided. And I really have no additional comments. I haven't recommended security for this project. There's no signage proposed for the project and I feel that it is compliant and does represent a complete application to the board.
Okay. Randy, the structure is for storage and office use, do you know what kind of storage?
Well, it's general storage, so it's not...
Yeah, okay.
Right now, I'm just doing a speaker app. And we have two small little office spaces, almost four and a half, for, for, for this purposes, not, or less, definitely.
Okay.
And so you can, your original question was what was going, whatever was going.
Okay, okay.
There's a big rock, a waste disposal, it says it in the area.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change the battery in just a second, one moment. But it is internal storage, correct?
It's internal storage, it's just draft, it's inside, inside the building.
What's my water cell at all? Reserve.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Yeah, so there's no dumpster that like is normally proposed or screening or anything because they don't, they don't propose to generate that kind of waste, so we don't show that on there. It's just going to be internal, you know, trash cans that they're going to take to the dump, so that's what's being proposed there.
Any other questions? Okay, this application is complete, no waivers have been requested or needed. That's correct, right, Matt?
Yep. In the interest of increasing conformity, I don't believe that any waivers are necessary for it.
Okay. And so I'd entertain a motion to accept this application as complete? Thank you.
Seconded.
It's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Randy. I'll open the public hearing now if anyone wants to comment on, on this application. Now's the time for you to do that, ask any questions that you might have. Okay, everyone's all set? Okay.
I'll just, yeah, I'll recommend a few conditions should the board wish to proceed. Condition number one, incorporation of the, of the plan set, including the seven plans presented with the application. That includes the driveway profile plan. I did include that in the board's packet that was provided to Dave Ford. Number two, the applicant shall be responsible for payment of all recording fees. All final plans to be stamped and signed and dated by a licensed land surveyor and professional engineer. All the documentation submitted is incorporated as part of the approval, approval to all federal, state and local permits, including potentially a Town of Wolfboro driveway permit, depending on Dave Ford's preference here and the fact that the driveway really isn't being substantially reconstructed. Plan set and plan notes shall be amended to include the standard parking space dimension of nine by 19. I passed along a detail of the amendment that has been made to the plan and we just need to get a final version of that. Obviously, the proposed future building site and paving are not incorporated as part of the approval and would require further review by the planning board. Installation of all erosion control and inspection by town, if any, is, is put into place, but I think we're already past that point here. So I would actually recommend removal of condition number eight. New condition number eight, final letter of compliance with ADA to be submitted by the applicant. Condition number, shown as 10, but really condition number nine here, I had put a timeline on the paving and striping, but due to some environmental issues that we recognize, the applicant is still working through. The, the intention of this was to ensure that the improvements are made in accordance with the plans, but the 60-day timeline may not be feasible for the applicant as I understand it. So I would recommend removal of this unless the planning board is, is interested in potentially speaking to the applicant directly about what the timeline might be.
What did you hope to accomplish by number 10?
Simply ensuring that the paving and ADA spaces were clearly marked and completed, but I, I don't think it's necessary based on the stage of the project that the applicant is currently at.
That's an unusual condition, I haven't seen that before.
The only, I've recommended on a few situations where ADA access needed to be marked clearly, but I, I agree that it is unusual, I've included here and that's why I've recommended removing it. I think it is not necessary in this case.
It's a good idea to remove it.
So those will be conditions one through eight then.
All right. Thank you. Well, it, it seems to me that this application certainly fits the, making a nonconforming use less nonconforming. The setbacks are, now seem to be complying. Buffering has been provided. Parking coverage has, has been reduced and it seems that the use that's being proposed is less intrusive in the, this is a residential neighborhood.
Yep.
And this would be not as much adverse impact, I would think, on, on this neighborhood. Plus, I think the applicant has done a really great job of cleaning up a site that was quite an eyesore.
I'd also suggest that the drainage from the hill above probably was not well taken care of in the previous site and now there seem to be plans to make that a better situation.
Right. Thank you. So I'd...
I'd like to agree with Peter on that drainage at the top side. I know that when we did the facilities master plan chapter, we looked at that area on that side and said it would be a good area to have stormwater management from the town's side. It's encouraging to see it come from the neighbor's side first and maybe the town will step up and they'll put one in on their side also.
Okay, well, entertain a, a motion to approve this application with conditions indicated?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, great. Thank you very much, folks. Thank you, folks, for coming.
Next time, I'll bring water.
Or a less lengthy application.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is opportunity for public comments. The member of the public wants to comment on any issue?
They're all running away from the cabinet.
It's time to do that. We'll go on to action items. We have a lot merger. Ellis Stedman, 1989 Trust, Tax Map 134-3 and 133-20. This is at 139 Governor Wentworth.
Brief review, kind of an interesting situation with Robie's RV Park here and a vacant lot both owned in common. One of the challenges here that I saw is that obviously Robie's RV Park also has condoized ownership within it, but the underlying lot of record is in fact owned in common with that adjacent lot. So despite the interesting situation, I see no issue that would prevent the lot from merger. I did, and I actually did, in this case, contact the trustee, which is a, an attorney with Pierce Satwood, to just confirm some details and I was comfortable with what she told me.
And Matt, this is, this middle line is going to be eliminated?
The, so the lot?
This, this lot line?
This large lot is the RV park and this small lot is vacant with nothing on it right now.
Okay.
And it doesn't, and, and, you know, one concern I had was, you know, by right expansion that would be created by this, it's, it's, it doesn't. It doesn't increase the ability to exacerbate any nonconformity. Anything will be subject to site plan review, you know, that, that's not an issue as a result of this merger.
Do we know the history of these lots, the way this was, is it owned by the...
Yeah, John, I'm sorry, I don't know. Is there something, someone specific you're wondering about or?
I'm just wondering why it wasn't done earlier.
I, that's, I had the same question when I looked at it. I, I don't, I don't know. Maybe they were in different owners. Let me check real quick, actually, just so I can get you an answer on that.
This abuts the town parcel here at the head?
So this abuts, give me one moment, let me just pull it up on the tax maps.
It looks like there's soil in that area. I'm wondering if there's another house, a dwelling, there's nothing on that. I see a house out by the blue, I see another building down way at the point and so...
So John, the, the building that you see pretty clearly there, that's a house. The other things that you see are RVs that are parked there, because this is Robie's RV park. So I don't believe there are any other houses out there, just the one house that the, the owner uses, from what I, from what I understand, unless somebody has a better knowledge of what's in there.
This isn't expanding a nonconforming...
No, because the, the merger doesn't by nature expand the use at all and it doesn't...
The ability to...
It, it, setbacks are the only issue here, right? So they could, they do have more space in which to develop, but, you know, the basis of measurement for nonconforming use is the extent of the use, not the size of the lot. So they don't gain any ability to expand here.
Okay.
Right?
Not to have more room for more RVs?
It's a nonconforming use already, so yeah, I don't, I don't think, yeah, no, it's...
Asking the question.
Nope, yeah, it's, I don't believe it expand, it gives them the ability through this action to actually expand it. I think they'd have to go back to the ZBA and the planning board for, for further review.
But in, in technical terms, the setback isn't the 20 feet anymore, it's now...
Moved over.
Moved over, because they can build to that line because they own the other side.
Yep, that's exactly right. So the setbacks are the one thing that changed with this. They could technically build over to that new line, but other than that, there, there's no significant change. And I don't, Avon, you said the town parcel?
Yeah, it's this number 18 up here, the little tiny piece that the town owns at the head of that brook.
Oh, that's the Melanson?
Oh, yes. Yes, that is Town of Wolfboro, yep.
Some of the secret land that the town has.
Yeah, I know. And John, I don't see any other owners in it in the last couple of years at least, but there may be some going back, going back away. I'm sure it got into a trust somehow, so, yeah.
Okay.
Move to approve. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. CIP appointments.
Just a, the Board of Selectmen have recommended Paul O'Brien as their representative for the Board of Selectmen. So in the, last year, you, your protocol was to basically formally appoint him after their recommendation.
All right, then I'll make a motion to appoint Paul O'Brien as the Board of Selectmen's representative to CIP.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we're going to be, Matt and I...
I'm gonna try to get you to make some free coffee for the year.
Matt and I are going to be talking to another citizen member.
Yeah, we have a meeting with a gentleman who reached out to us and is recently slowing down in work and has some interest and I've actually met this individual on other projects. Seems to be very savvy, maybe a financial brain that might be good for CIP process, but that would be a, we have the two citizen-at-large seats open right now, so meeting with him next week and we'll, if he's interested, we'll bring him back to you to, to appoint him formally to the committee, so.
Okay, and we still need a planning board, one, well...
Oh, you're on.
Well, yeah, it's okay.
Did we appoint you already? I don't believe we did, yeah.
I move that we reappoint Kathy Barnard as our CIP representative.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, but we still do need one more member.
It's fun, right, Mike?
It's fun.
In a torture kind of way?
No, no, actually it's an important job and...
It is, it is really.
It's a good job and somebody from the planning board, the nation, step up and do it.
Not you.
Not me, as I said.
Okay, well, all right, let's see...
And we've still got time, I mean, so we're going to get into it soon, but...
Don't you do it.
Probably excitement will mount as we get closer to the time, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll guilt somebody. I'm looking at John.
Okay, the New Hampshire DOT letter?
Just an informational letter. You, you see in there that they've requested a list of mitigation actions. Dave Ford is handling those mitigation actions on behalf of the town, but it was addressed to the board, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of this project.
All right. Planning board minutes from April 16th.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Somebody wants to second? And motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You understand?
And, and anyone against the motion and one abstention?
I beg your pardon, Chairman.
Yeah, no.
I oftentimes jumped in on.
No, no, but, okay. There was a TRC meeting that I didn't attend because I wasn't here.
Yeah.
And the, on the agenda is the Booster Master Plan.
Yes.
Could you just tell us, I mean, are we going to see a master plan from?
So, yeah, we had a, we had a really positive meeting with Booster Academy, their team that's working on their master plan, their campus master plan, with the TRC members, kind of department heads, to, to talk about what they were thinking for their site. It is big, hundred-year stuff. I mean, it's pretty, pretty shocking what they're kind of looking at doing. That visit to the TRC was sort of dipping the toe in the water of getting it out to the public. They've just finalized it now and we've recommended to them that they do come to the planning board at some time, and I believe they will, and talk to you about that master plan as part of a work session meeting to, to sort of see how it fits with planning board's comprehensive plan. Spoiler alert, it fits really well with a lot of what we're, it fits really well with a lot of what we're talking about, particularly along the Route 28 corridor of the project in 2024, which is great. But there are a lot of big ideas that I think they want to share with you. It's pretty, pretty visionary stuff. So they do plan to come to the planning board. I'm sensitive to the fact that I know that the Board of Selectmen probably want to know what's going on as well, but because it's really a planning document, my advice to Booster has been to come here first. And I know that there may be some resistance to that, but they... And I know that there may be some resistance to that, but they may do them simultaneously. I'm not really sure. That's ultimately up to them, but I think it's important based on particularly how the dorm project was done and any potential future projects, that you folks understand how it fits in with their bigger, you know, project priority list and vision. So I think coming here is really, really important.
They, I, I did attend, they, we're also at a previous TRC meeting and we asked them to reach out to the neighbors.
Yes, so they, they will be coming forward with an application soon.
No, have they reached out to the neighbors about the...
I can't confirm that they have or have not. I, I don't believe that they have. I know that they wanted to have the meeting with staff last week that they had before doing so. I would expect that they've made contact by this time, but they wanted to make sure that the town understood their long-term plan before they did that, Kathy. Even though that project was very specific in nature, they were talking about, they wanted to make sure that we were, we understood their plan before they did that.
Okay, so the application is coming in June?
We do not know. We do not know.
Not, not the master plan, but...
I, I don't know because I, I anticipated that it would, but I, there may potentially be a delay.
Okay.
So we just, we just don't know at this time, so.
Okay, and that application is for the maintenance facility? TRC is a public meeting?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And, and so it's for a new maintenance facility that will be on the opposite side of the street?
Yep. So it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting application and...
Next to Dr. Neal's property going toward the hospital on that particular, and property that's owned by Brewster.
And that's why we thought it was critical to look at the master plan because at first, you know, at first you might say, why are they moving their maintenance facility across the street, out of the campus? But when you look at what they're trying to do on the other side, on the lakeside, it really does seem to make some sense. So that's why we want you all to be aware of, you know, how it fits into their larger plan because it's not, you know, it's not, this is part of something bigger, I guess. So I think, I hope that they come to you before that application actually is submitted and talk about the bigger plan, but I don't know that it would definitely happen.
I would encourage them to.
Yeah.
Right.
Make their job easier.
Also, again, and I mentioned this at TRC, I would really encourage them to come to us first with the master plan. I think that's our job. We're the ones that are then going to have to look individually at all of these projects and that's just the proper course to, to take, in my mind.
They've been advised of that, yep. Yep.
Okay, so anyway, that's...
But it, yeah, not to end on kind of a fuzzy note, but really kind of positive because this is, you know, just a, a sign that we are improving our relationship, I think, with Brewster a little bit, which is, is, you know, generally positive for the community, I think. They were comfortable sitting down to have this session with us where, you know, I'm not saying they wouldn't have done that before, but I think that this was a really good sign that they want to work with us and make sure that we're kind of moving in the same direction. You know, just sort of continuing on what we did through the Route 28 study where they were very involved. We'd like to continue for them to be involved with what we're doing.
Well, I think they, they used to invite probably their members. I mean, the previous master plan, they brought...
Okay, good. Then great, we're right on line with the board, that's perfect.
Things go a lot smoother. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Oh, oh, no, no, just one other, I mean, are we doing...
I know what you're going to ask, I know what you're going to ask and I, so we may see, I, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's ready, but that's...
You don't think the master...
I don't think it's quite ready, Kathy, I'm sorry. Knew you were going to ask me tonight, but I really don't think that we're quite ready for public...
I wasn't trying to put you on the...
No, no, because I, I want to get it to you, but I, I really think that we need a little more time to just format it, yeah.
Fine. You think we can do it in June?
I think we can definitely do it in June.
Okay, okay.
I'm confident in that.
Okay, sorry, folks.
I'm sorry, I haven't added soon.
Thank you to everybody.
Aye. Thank you, John.
You're not... It's not your role.
Thanks for going out to the site.
What's that?
Yes.
I was thinking, most of for going out to the site.
It's good to see.
Yeah.
I think logic will be happy.
They can submit in...